We want to do a roll call. Or Alex, are you good with just charting who's here and documenting that?
I'm, I'm good with whatever. Um, I've got everyone here but Emily and Paul Drys.
Mm hmm. Okay. Um, can start by approving last month's, um, meeting minutes? And I get a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
And can I ask a question about that? This is Lori.
Yes. Yes.
Do, do they print out a copy of last month's minutes and what happened and how it was voted? Because after last month's minutes, or after last month's meetings, I actually had a person come into the bank and ask me about the, the meeting and, you know, why things went the way they did. And they said they got a copy of the minutes. And I don't see a copy of the minutes with last month's remarks on it.
Uh, it's actually online.
That was published.
Yeah, I, I published it on our website.
On the website.
I can definitely send it out to everyone, um, once it's finalized.
I would prefer to do.
Where they got, where they were able to see a copy of it.
So last, last month was the first month for everyone's information that, um, we actually, I think we talked about it in the beginning of the meeting that it was recorded. Um, and Alex, um, uh, typed up the minutes for the meeting, uh, from the video that was recorded of the meeting and that was published on the website.
Right.
Um, you know, and we spoke a little bit about that in the beginning, just for full transparency and to, um, have the information, um, easily available.
Thanks, Bo. He just posted the link in the chat if anyone wants to go look at that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call it up just to see it. Oops. I guess I can't do that without losing everybody else in here.
That's what I did.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion to approve them?
Lori?
I'll second it. Amy.
Amy?
Yeah.
Seconded. Um, I don't really have any remarks.
We can need approval.
We need to add, we need to get A's and A's.
I'm sorry. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Guess I'll turn it over to the director for, for start of the applications.
Yeah, um, so this month, um, we got a lot of applications in, in a really big foul swoop. Um, quite a few in from the city. Um, I'll let Alex start going through them and I can kind of add in some additional information here and there. Um, other than, um, the GMOs, I think last week, or I'm sorry, last month, we talked about, um, you know, the process moving forward and we continue to be open to any suggestions or any positive criticism again. Um, one thing that we, we did, um, a little bit of, right off the bat, we did a little bit of, um, self critiquing, uh, putting together the agenda and looking at some of these reports in whole. We talked about trying to, um, provide a complete, um, but concise report, just trying to streamline some of the information. And we personally felt that in review, we, we've taken out some of the information, um, in the reports that of things that were, um, things that were, that, that the applicants were meeting hands down, we didn't mention. And in review, we thought that maybe we should still mention some of those things so that it's clear that we did a full and complete review. Um, and you may note that mainly on, um, especially on that Ramco development, um, report. You know, in hindsight, we, we, we're gonna keep some more, some more information of what we've covered, even though it's hands down, they've, they've got it covered, they're providing it, we're not worried about it. But, um, you know, we, we felt like maybe we're almost giving the impression that we didn't do the due justice at looking at those things when in fact we did. So, you know, we're, we're, we're open for comment if anybody, you know, has anything on that. So, keep that in mind. Um, and that we're plugging forward. I've met with a few planning boards for Cincinnatus and Solon. Um, talked about just implementing some changes, maybe, um, offering that, um, talk to them about their willingness to participate in using that updated, uh, referral form and, uh, their level of comfort if we provide fillable PDFs on our website for their residents to be able to use as well. So, so far, everybody's, um, really in favor of updating their referral forms and just using a concise one that we provide. But with that, I think we've got quite a few projects to go through. So I'll let Alex kick it off unless anybody has any other questions.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Just so. There you go. So we can go through it together. I know you all have it, but it kind of came in different parts. So make sure we see it all. Um, so yeah, we've got a lot of them this time. We'll start with an easy one, um, smaller one. Uh, we've got a use variance for constructing a single family, a second single family dwelling on the same lot as an existing single family dwelling, uh, in the town of Solon. It is Zoned Ag 2. Um, we had the recommendation that the zoning board of appeals for Solon find that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. Um, and two, that, uh, the single, secondary single family dwelling is arranged to the best ability so that each dwelling could exist on separate lots, should it be subdivided. It's not gonna be able to do that, but I want to make them aware so that, you know, with, you know, so that the local planning board can, uh, take that into consideration.
Is that the extent of the recommendations? Uh, I guess it is.
Uh, Seeker as well. Sorry. It was a third, or Seeker.
Uh, motion to approve staff's recommendations.
This is Wendy. I'll approve. I'll make a motion.
And the second?
Second.
Is that Bo? And any discussion?
It was Paul who seconded it.
Okay, oh, sorry. I have an issue. I have, I've never been one in favor of multiple dwellings on a single parcel. Um, I'm afraid it sets a, a real big precedence for any zoning laws. And most zoning laws state that there's only one residence per parcel. Um, I'm afraid if you allow one, then it kind of defeats the purpose of any law stating that. There's been multiple times when it does incur issues on down in, in later years. Say when there's a mother-in-law's house built, but then they're gone 10 years from now. It ends up being, you know, right-of-way issues and things like that that, you know, cause hardship with the two places. Um, another thing I was concerned about is the health department regulations for septic systems. Is there enough for a replacement system for both houses for septic design?
I did send it to, um, Mike Ryan over at the, uh, um, county health department who's in charge of septic systems and stuff. Uh, he sent back no comment on it. So that's.
No comment? Is that what you said?
Yeah, he, he said, I have no comment on this. So.
Wow.
Yeah, I was surprised too. I was like, wow, I, I thought you'd have a field day. Okay.
So, I, I got a question. Are they putting a septic well, a, a separate well and septic for the new house?
They did not state that. I have, I've not been in contact with them.
I mean, cause to me, I have a problem like Ann does, because I've run into problems with facilities like this before in the past where somebody did want to subdivide it and there was not enough separation distance to do it, wells and septic. And they, they ran into a lot of problems and some lots they couldn't build on, they had a bad system. So there are problems with trying to do this, not so much now, but like Ann says, down the road because it may be an in-law apartment, but people change and they sell the properties and then we have problems with people trying to subdivide it and they don't have the required hundred yard, a hundred foot separation from wells and septic and they want to put another one in. They, they become issues. So I, I don't know if there's a, like Ann says, I don't know if this is a good idea on a lot, maybe in a bigger lot, I wouldn't care. But something, it's only three acres and you end up with like one and a half if they subdivide it or something. So I don't know what they're gonna have for that kind of issue down the road. Because in the city, I wouldn't care either because they got water and sewer, but on a spot out in the country, it's tough sometimes to make those things work.
What is the size of a replacement system? Charted even? No? It's like 300 by 300 feet for a replacement and not sure. I thought it showed a secondary well on that site plan also. Let's see.
I think the intent with the recommendation that it has, that it to be arranged so that it could exist as separate lots. When, when I reviewed this, my impression was that that would cover the, um, the, the offsets for the Department of Health requirements to have its own systems. So if it was to be designed to be able to be separated, it would have to have its own systems and its own setback allowances. But perhaps it would be best to, to state that as a, its own, its own recommendation altogether.
I think it would go along with that. Um, if you did something like that, I'd feel more comfortable as long as they have them. I've just seen somewhere they couldn't make it work afterwards and it became a problem for the new homeowner.
And I, I did hear from, um, a few members from the board in Solon who, um, um, you know, that, that they were, um, that this, that they, you know, this project was, they, they had concerns as well. So they were
Yeah.
definitely going to be addressing those.
I mean, usually a mother-in-law's apartment or, or in-laws apartment, I should say, is, could be built on and typically is built on, not a whole separate, separate structure with septic system and well and everything.
Yeah.
They might even be trying to use the same septic system and well, which could be a problem also. Um, so does somebody want to make a motion to amend the recommendations and add a friendly amendment there?
How would you amend it? Um, what would you state?
We have a standard language that the, um, if you'd like, that the, um, that the applicant meet, uh, Department of Health requirements for, um, septic and well, uh, offsets.
Yeah, if you would put that in there, I'd be along with it. It would be as a separate loss, it would meet setback requirements. And I'd be happy with it.
And we could, you know, yeah, and we, if that was a separate statement that it, um, to provide, um, to provide, you know, facilities or infrastructure if it's divided in the future. Yep.
So does somebody want to make the motion to amend the recommendations?
I'll make that motion and, and Trish, you're gonna make that amendment? Are you gonna, the wording, you're gonna put in that amendment then?
I'll put it in.
Whatever your standard wording is, I'll accept. So as long as it does that.
Can I, can I get a second on that motion to amend?
A second. Amy.
Amy?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we all good with that? Anybody else have any other issues or concerns? If not, all those in favor is accepting the amended recommendations?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? So Carrie?
All right. Second one we got is in the town of Freetown, we've got a major subdivision of a parcel, which is approximately 287.7 acres. Uh, subdividing it into nine parcels. Uh, he told me the purpose is to sell them off, um, to people wanting to, to build homes and stuff. Um, the recommendations we had were that, um, the, the picture given to us was, uh, not a survey. Um, the town of Freetown can waive the requirement that they, they, they have a survey for preliminary plaits. So first one is that either the applicant provide the additional information, um, which is, uh, a survey or that the town of Freetown Board, um, waive that requirement for them. The town of Freetown Board had said that they're going to waive it. So that's why we tacked on the second one, which basically says that, um, they have to get a survey before the final plat. Uh, final approval, sorry, final approval. Uh, and then compliance with Seeker. That's what I got.
So this is on, uh, Freetown Hoxie Gorge Road or Hoxie, Hoxie Gorge Freetown Road, one of those roads. But, um, as you can see from the map, and we had spoken to several planning board members and they, they had, they felt that it was almost unfair to have developers in a preliminary plat or, or individual residents, in this case, the, um, resident that owns this farm. And, um, have it officially surveyed. Um, and they spoke to them that they, their, their conversation with the landowner and our conversation when we, we discussed this was that they were in no way close to the minimum, they were much higher than the minimum road frontages. Their lot width and depth ratios were way beyond anything that we'd have to be concerned about. So the, the, the planning board felt like it was almost unfair to ask a resident to get a survey done for a preliminary plat and then and spend that money. If, if there were any other adjustments or any little thing that came up that somebody on the board wanted changed, then they would have to pay for a whole second survey of such a large property.
Okay, prior to moving forward with that, let's make a motion to accept the staff's recommendations on that.
Um, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second? Okay. I think it's a good idea to wait for the final plat for final approval. That's definitely a good idea. Um, I have a concern though, in one of the parcels, there is a parcel that is shown in red dotted, it's 15.1. And it's within one of the parcels. Is that an existing parcel that needs to be consolidated or what's that?
Which parcel are you talking about?
The lower section of the, um, plat map that you have, the map that you put together. Uh, yeah, it might be.
Oh, yes. Um, I actually found out about that on Monday. Um, I don't know how I missed it, but I did. But, um, I would ask that, I, I for, I totally forgot because I wasn't looking at this map. I was looking at the other one. I would ask that, um, we add that recommendation that, that is consolidated into it.
So who is the owner? Is that the same owner of the overall site?
Yes.
It is. Okay. So yeah, consolidation should probably happen there, I would think. So motion to add an amendment to the recommendations? Anybody?
I'll make the motion. Amy.
This is Wendy. I'll second.
Wendy seconded it? Okay. So something to the effect that the existing parcel 1919.00-01-15.1 shall be consolidated into the contiguous holdings of the property owner?
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I was just curious. Um, you mentioned in the synopsis that it's within 500 feet um, of active farming within the Cortland County Consolidated Agricultural District. Is this in the consolidated agricultural district?
Um, I believe this one was taken out of it, but if I'm remembering correctly, the farm over here is.
So this one is no longer actively farmed?
I believe it was, it was taken out of the, of the, yeah, yes, I believe so.
Yes, the property owner said he used, it used to be farmed, but they are no longer farming it.
And is there, um, i- is there any consideration or issue, um, as they go to look to do this, given that they abut, um, state forest? Does that come into play at all?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
I'm just curious if, um, their look to subdivide this property, given that they abut the state forest comes into play, if there's anything that state might need to be considered part of because they are neighbors to the state forest. I don't know. I'm just curious.
Not that I'm aware of.
Bas- based on the lot sizes that they're talking about making, Bo, I would think not. I mean, because I abut the state forest up here. There shouldn't be any restrictions.
Is that one of them, possibly one of the, um, things that caused the referral to county planning when it's so close to any state?
No.
Property?
It only works on state property and county property if there's a building on it. So since there's no building in the state forest, it doesn't count.
Okay.
Yeah, I know there are some of the trails out there that come out of the forest and go across some private property and hit the Hoxie Gorge Road and I'm not sure, I think the Finger Lakes Trail comes out through there too, but, uh, this hopefully won't affect that.
Yeah, I think that's further north.
Yeah. Yeah, that's further up where Shutey Cortland owns a lot of land up there. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? All those in favor of accepting the amended staff recommendations with the consolidation included? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, anybody opposed? No abstentions? So Carrie?
All right. Next one, we're getting into some of the bigger ones. Next one is a special use permit and an area variance for a new digital sign that the, uh, Cortland Repertoire Theater is looking to put up on the front of their downtown building. Um, it's near a lot of state routes and, and US routes. So that's why it's coming here. Um, the recommendations we have for it are that the city, um, weigh the benefit of exceeding the allowed area for projecting signs that the applicant approve, or the applicant receive approval from NICE, NICE DOT. Um, which, which NICE DOT has said they will deny. However, um, I'm talking to Kirby who's, who's the one who applied for it on behalf of the, uh, the theater. Uh, they, they're probably gonna try and do something angled instead. Uh, they've got 2.76 feet between the building and the right-of-way, the state right-of-way. So they're probably gonna try and do that. This approval should also approve that one if they just change it to be angled like that instead of straight out. Um, third one is that the sign have minimum message duration of eight seconds, instantaneous transition time, have a maximum brightness of 5,000. I'm not sure what those measurement units are, but they were on the NICE DOT, uh, uh, sheet during the day and 280 at night. Um, that the city consider defining the time period what constitutes nighttime for the purpose that, uh, the one above. Cause it's not defined and that might become an issue at some point. Uh, and that the applicant obtain a building permit from code enforcement and that they comply with Seeker.
All those in favor of her motion, I'm sorry, motion to.
I'll make the motion to accept staff recommendations.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. And discussion?
Alex, what did you mean by the ankle thing? What's, what, what are you talking about on that?
So right now it sticks straight out from the side of the building. And what they're looking to do is essentially, because there's two faces facing each way. They're gonna take those faces and they're gonna turn them like that so that the sign only protrudes out 2.7 feet.
Will it still be visible for everybody that way? From, coming from either direction probably?
That's what they're trying to figure out. This was an idea they just came up with, uh, yesterday. So.
I think it's a good idea to have a sign down there. I think a theater needs a marquee. So.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, and we, we forwarded, um, all of our information on to, um, Bob Ray at the city too. And it was really good information for us, but the city or the state has very strict restrictions on any overhanging structure that goes over their right-of-way. Um, I guess they were explaining that, um, you know, that, that was part of, um, in Homer at Dashers, the sidewalk they originally proposed going under the awning. Um, and they do not want awnings or any other physical protrusions. So they were, they seemed to be drawing a pretty hard line on that with us. And we sent their contact information and their, their email to Bob at the city as well.
Do we know the height from the sidewalk to the bottom of the sign, how far off the sidewalk it is?
It's probably it's above the windows.
It, it was not given to me specifically. No.
I read there's a minimum.
It's way above the windows and the, they're pretty high.
Yeah, they, I, if you look at the screen, it's, it's, it's gonna go
Yeah.
right here about that height.
It says a nine feet minimum according to the.
That's correct.
Um, was there any reason for historic review in this? Is this considered part of a historic district?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
I know on Court Street, it comes off Main Street and turns down Court Street and goes down a little ways. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just was curious, you know, did the, this has come to us first. So the city hasn't reviewed it because I know on the, you know, with their zoning and you can't even have a flashing light in your window saying open, um, in the business district. And I mean, this significantly changes the character of downtown. Um, you know, we had an issue and took a lot of review when they put in the first digital sign on the IDA property. on the IDA property there at the railroad. Um, because, you know, adding those digital signs and the light, the extra light that they protrude and you know, the the flash of the the changeover and all. Um, and the zoning board allowed it to move through in part because that's in a fairly fairly industrial spot in Cortland and it was tucked to, you know, to the side. You know, this is a digital billboard right downtown. Um, and now where does that end? Uh, you know, we've start this one. Is every business gonna now want a digital billboard sticking out from the side of their building? And I understand it's a marquee for a theater, but we don't have it. And then where do, you know, where do you start to draw the line um on those sorts of things? And is that a, you know, significant change to the character of of downtown um from this? And when zoning doesn't even allow, like I said, doesn't even allow a flashing light to flash, we have open. It can't be one of those flashing opens. It has to just be on, you know, all the time.
I definitely had concern with traffic um distraction. I mean, that's a intersection where it gets backed up right to that point, and somebody's either gonna be watching the sign and could potentially rear end the car in front of them.
Well, Bull, I understand your uh concerns, but I really think something like this goes well with a theater type operation. So I don't, maybe the city should look at where you could allow such things or not, but I think something like this is a good idea for something like CRT has, but maybe not for every business. So I don't know how you would do that in codes to change something so it wouldn't be every single business, but they may have to look at restrictions and where to allow such things and where not, I don't know, but personal opinion.
Um, I did notice that their digital marquee zoning um was amended in two thousand nineteen. Uh, Tricia or Alex, do you know what that amendment was about, what that included? I couldn't find that.
The amendment changed it, fr- from what I believe, it changed it from being uh restricted to uh allowed with special use permit.
Okay. So this is an area variance and a special use permit still with the redesign, it would still need the area variance, correct?
Correct, yeah, because it would, it, I mean, if they design it a different way, they could avoid it, but I my assumption is they'll also get an area variance for that. And if they change it, they'll still need to reapply at the city. It just won't have to come back up here.
Well, I think that because they've amended their digital sign ordinance that I find it acceptable, but little hazardous, I'd say.
I have one question. Um, if they're worried about the sign protruding and overhanging, could they put something on top of the building? It is a one-story building. They they're not allowed to?
The code doesn't allow it to go above the roof line.
Okay.
And to be honest, when we reached out to DOT and um they came back with their response about the um protrusion into their right of way and overhanging the sidewalk, I thought I honestly thought the that the proximity to that intersection would be more of an issue for them and was surprised when they didn't seem as um, you know, as deterred by that.
Yeah, we raised a lot of those questions about, you know, the the turnover of the sign and when I was on the zoning board, um and we got a lot of good information about, you know, that given that it's an eight second and an instantaneous um as DOT specified in their stuff, that it's drivers don't really see that that flip and it doesn't distra- really distract them. Um, so I mean, that that it's really more of a character issue probably than anything else, but you can just leave that to a certain extent up to the zoning board. That's that's kind of their choice and um, but I do understand DOT's concern about projecting over. Um, I mean, we have a high load go through for something and it rips the sign off, or, you know, a a semi is a little little too tall and a little too close. Uh, you know, there could be a lot of issues with that. So I could see why they wouldn't want anything over their right of way. Um, particularly o- right over top of the street, not just the right of way, but oh, you know, anything over to the street, so.
It wouldn't protrude into the street, would it?
I hope not.
No, it's not that far out. It's pretty wide in there.
That's the projection is like four feet or?
I believe I had it at
Yeah, two point three seven or something, was it?
Well, that would be, but you know, that's what they have to be out of the right of way. So the right of way starts two point seven six feet from the edge of the building. This sign that they're that they're proposing right now, which is gonna get denied because it's gonna go into that right of way, is six point two five feet from the wall. So it would, it it would go into the right of way, but it would only stay above the sidewalk part of the right of way.
But wouldn't wouldn't exceed the sidewalk, okay?
Yeah.
It wasn't clear how deep that was from the the lines. All right.
Yeah.
We'll let DOT handle that, that's fine. Okay, I I don't I don't have any amendments to make. I, you know, it was just, I just wanted to raise it as as a a point of concern um for my comments, but I I I have no problem with the staff's recommendation.
Um. I'm a little concerned that they're gonna change the shape, design, protrusions and everything, and our recommendations aren't based on that new information that you gave us. I mean, we're recommending, our recommendations are based on it protruding the six feet out and being straight out, not at angles or anything like that. And like, did you say that they're determined, they haven't determined that yet, whether they'll actually do that angle or how they'll do it?
At very early stages, they just came up with the idea yesterday, so.
Are we supposed to approve something that's not kind of solidified yet?
Anne, it really can't make it any, they they're recommendations are more about the height and the duration of the sign and approval of transportation departments. I don't think it really affects our, their recommendations from what I can see on here.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, all those in favor of staff's recommendations?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I have to abstain in because I'm on the board. Amy.
Okay, one abstention. Anybody else? Okay, so noted. And onward to the next.
All right, we've got two zoning text amendments from the city this time around. Um, so this one is a zoning text amendment to remove a section of the code which regulates and limits the permitted uses in the floodway district. Uh, took a little reading to fully get um, you know, what they're trying to do. But essentially, uh, there's a minimum requirement that of, you know, by FEMA that anything developed in the floodway get a zero rise or a no rise certificate. The code enforces that, and if we let them get rid of this, it would still enforce that. What this would do is it would get rid of the requirement that they have to have a special use permit as well on top of the no rise. So it, you know, if if this goes through and it's removed, they just need the no rise. If it doesn't go through, they need the no rise and the special use permit. So recommendation um for that is that the city weigh the public safety issues created by removing the section that requires special use permits versus the economic benefits of removing it. Um, second uh, second one is compliance with SEACR.
Um, motion to accept staff's recommendations.
I'll move it.
Dan, second? Anybody second?
I'll second it.
I'll so.
Okay. And any discussion on that?
I have some, I I have a question. So this is, this is through the whole city of Cortland, correct? The floodway through the whole city?
Correct, this would change the code for the whole city.
So would every section of the floodway require um hydraulic study or a no no rise certification through the whole city?
It would still require that, yes.
It does that now.
So so who does this? Who who would be the person to make that determination?
I'm doing that right now for like Ron Walsh for a fence he's putting up in his backyard that's in the floodway. So it requires an engineer's certification, there's no rise in whatever they're building there.
But it would be, it would be blanket throughout the whole city, so.
It's already required in order to meet floodway and flood zone requirements.
Right.
The city has to enforce that as part of their flood control measures. Um, so they they can't approve permits for construction within floodplains and floodways without that kind of certification.
So this would only apply if someone wants to build something in a floodway. It wouldn't have to be blanket throughout the city, throughout the whole floodway. Is that correct or no?
It only applies to floodway and the flood districts, basically. Floodway ordinance, yeah. There's a floodway overlay district, I think, right?
Right, 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 right.
I don't know if I'm in favor of this change or not, though, because it sounds like it's a personal request from this guy named Pierce wanted to have this go through. I see the guy doing the the caboose thing with the food thing. And he doesn't want to go through the special permit process, and I don't think it's that big a deal to go through it, and it has restrictions on what uses are permitted over and above what um what the flood ordinance lets. In other words, the way the ordinance reads right now, you can only have certain structures within the floodway.
Right.
And we're taking that out, and he doesn't like that because he can't have his caboose thing in there, which I don't know. I'm not sure that's the best thing to do. Um, I don't know. Would he have to have a use variance? Is that the problem? So he wants us to eliminate to get a use, time to get a use variance? So we're mending the entire city code, so one guy doesn't get a use variance? That's what it sounds like. Which I I don't know. So it's it's sounds like it's being pushed by a personal individual for one thing to get around ordinance, and I don't know if that's the best way of doing it or not. So so I don't think, yeah, you would have to do that restriction anyhow, so I do admit that no matter what, still need a um uh certification, but it does make certain uses so that people don't put stuff in that's going, that might cause a problem. And so I can understand why they want to do it. I just don't know if it's the it sounds like it's being a personal, one project driven thing.
We we did make it clear when this was originally sent to our office, um that this was a request that needed to come from the municipality. So that it was them requesting that they wanted this for the entire city. And and we made that very clear because e- exactly that, Chuck, we we wanted to make sure that this is something the city wanted and not just one person wanting something changed for their project. Um, and that, you know, and we we were hoping, you know, what what the reality is, we're not sure, but it was submitted to us um by the municipality, and so we, you know, tried to, we're treating it as such that it's something they want.
Well, the only reason I bring that up is because some guys do flood analysis that are kind of half-assed, you really want to know. And I know a couple engineers that do that, and they don't really do much of a study on it, okay? And I've seen the city accept those before. So that's the only thing that worries me, okay? So I've seen that happen on two or three projects in the city in the past, and I know that they really didn't do much of a study on it. So it worries me that that's the only criteria now that, and the city goes along with it just because the guy stamps it and it gets approved and no one sees the flood for twenty or thirty years, so nobody cares and remembers it. But some of the projects I've seen go through where they've stated things like that definitely shouldn't have gone through because there's no real study being done. That's my own problem. Okay.
That's a valid concern.
So basically, any application that would fall in the floodplain um would need to have a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis done.
No, and no.
Floodway.
Floodway, not the floodplain, floodway.
In the floodway, yes, but they would, in order to get the project to go forward, they would have to have a analysis done.
Right.
And showing that there's no rise in flood level.
You're supposed to, yeah.
I have a question, since what we have existing is a FEMA regulation, does this have to be reported to FEMA, what we're doing with our, or or do they not care? They leave it totally up to us?
So according-
Now is a FEMA regulation.
According to FEMA, the no rise certificate is that's what they they require.
Okay.
Um, in in the document referenced uh from FEMA, the guidance document, they encourage going above and beyond, but you're not required to. So whether we have this or not is FEMA doesn't care. I mean, they they encourage more, but they don't, they don't need to review it as long as we're above the minimum.
I guess I'd be okay with it because it, you know, it's one more regulation that people have to go through and restrictions. As long as the city, when they're reviewing those certifications, has somebody that reviews what's been submitted to them to make sure it's somewhat logical. Um, because I've seen things just stated that I on hit or miss that are not uh really researched well, okay? That's all. And so the city has to be careful if they go through this, that when something gets submitted like that, someone reviews that and it that has some knowledge of flood stuff, because a real floodplain analysis to cause no rise would be a major study that would cost several thousands of dollars to do. And most of them don't go through that. They just kind of throw something out there, okay?
I suppose if it started being a problem, the city could always reenact this?
Well, i- it already is a problem. They already do it sometimes, so I've seen it done, so. Because it's, there have been things built in this city under the flood orders in the floodways that should not have been built that will cause problems someday down the road. Because someone got a letter from someone saying it wasn't a problem. And it will cause problems down the road.
Like last month, we had that project uh in Homer there where there was a major concern about uh the flood plane there and the rise, it seemed like. Would, how would this say it, they hadn't come before us already, how would that imply or affect a project like that? Where you have the multiple housing development right below it? Could that be something that we should be concerned about?
Where, I don't know if Homer was in the floodway. I don't think what they did there, they didn't fill in the floodway, they didn't, they they didn't touch the floodway in that project, in the floodplain, which is a different issue.
Okay. Anybody else?
I I appreciated the uh staff's recommendation to kind of thread the needle a bit on weighing the public safety with the economic um benefits, which is why I seconded the motion. I mean, I agree, Chuck, with the concerns. And and I personally, I'm not gonna put it in a motion, I'm not gonna change it, but personally, I'm gonna state my preference here, that the city keep it. They have the ability, they have given themselves that ability to make sure that they've got another layer of check in this special sensitive area of the floodway. Um, I think it makes sense to leave it. Um, we're, and it seems like they're trying to do e- e- even worse than spot zoning. They are citywide changing the entire zoning for the entire city and for the floodplain for one individual's desire to have one structure put in the in the floodway, and it it's already demonstrated exactly what the process is that that, you know, individual would need to go through. Um, and I would encourage them to go through that process. I I wouldn't like to see the city change their process. But I think the staff has done a good job of trying to thread that needle.
Okay, well, shall we vote? All those in favor of staff's recommendations?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I'm still opposed. Okay.
Amy, did you say you were for or against it?
Yeah, I, I, I said aye.
Okay. How did that work out? Just the two?
There were two. I only got one. Who voted nay? I only got one.
Chuck was a nay. I didn't hear Amy. What did you vote?
I said aye, yes.
Okay. Okay, moving forward.
Moving forward. All right. A second zoning text amendment from the city. Uh, this one is for making the code a little easier to understand and making some small adjustments to the code. Uh, there's a lot of small things. The only recommendation I have, uh, or the staff has is for the SEER requirements. Um, that, yeah, that's all I have. If you have any questions about it, I have, I sent you guys the full actual text amendment. That would be something that would be the actual, um, local law ordinance that changes it.
Okay, motion to accept staff's recommendations.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Anybody else have any questions or?
I've got, I've got some issues on this one and I really don't think they should go ahead with some of these changes. The biggest problem I see, if you're showing that Alex, I don't mind you taking off residential and all those things in there, but the city has a problem with their ordinance in definitions that match these descriptions. You take off the section where you strike out commercial and you have indoor lodging is allowed or not. But there's no definition of indoor lodging. There's a definition for commercial indoor lodging, not indoor lodging. So the definitions of the code, if you look at the definition sections are not matching some of these statements and what's allowed and what isn't allowed in certain areas. And I think the city before they make these changes should go through and make sure the definitions match the items in here. Because I've gone through this many times and if they don't, that's why lawyers make a lot of money. Because you will have people fighting over what that means. And I think the city should not do this until such a time as they make sure they have definitions for every one of those items that they're saying when it's allowed or when it's a special permit or when it's not. Because there will be issues by just crossing out institutional, residential, et cetera. Like I say, there is a definition for commercial indoor lodging. If you look at that thing you've got on your screen right now, but not for indoor lodging. So because of that, there may be issues when somebody, is it allowed to do this thing in a certain spot or not? Another item is like, uh, upper floor dwelling units. Okay, what's an upper floor dwelling unit? That's not defined. It's allowed in industrial districts. But if somebody has a dwelling unit on a second floor in some other zone, does that apply or not? Because the parking requirements are different for those two items. One has a one and a half requirement. One has a one parking lot requirement. So I think they need to go through and make sure they match all these definitions to what they really mean and what it means because there will be problems with this unless they do that. So I would rather have them delay this until they get their definitions straightened out or change the definitions along with this. So they match all those items and those specific things in there. My comment.
I agree.
Is there something we could add to the recommendations to clarify that?
We can, we can say, uh, very similar to what he said, that, um, that the city, um, let's see how to word it, that the city, um, define all uh, land use table items. Or, or check all land use, um, table items for the three tables.
Yeah, as long as they're defined specifically as they're worded there in the definitions, I don't have a problem. But unless they do that, I think there will be some fighting with people as to what you mean for one specific item or not. So I think they should really look at that.
That the city specifically define all land use table items for tables, um, three hundred dash thirteen, three hundred dash twenty-two and three hundred dash thirty.
Right.
That'd be good.
Put those into three hundred dash four definition section. And some of them they have, some of them they don't. Some exactly, some exactly matched, some of them don't.
I get a motion to amend the staff's recommendations.
I'll make the motion on Chuck's recommendation. Yep.
Second?
A second. Oh, whoever.
Wanna repeat what the, or are we good with Alex's definition there?
Could we just add a word to the beginning of that? And I want to make sure everybody's on board. Um, I think Alex, when you started off, you said define all land use. Um, I think Chuck had mentioned that some are defined and some are unclear. Some of the, some are the wrong definition. So maybe we should have a lead in with verify that all definitions are consistent or we can use another word in there. Verify that all definitions are, um, accurate and consistent throughout the code.
To avoid confusion.
I, I just want to make sure they're in the definition sections. You can find that item. So what are you gonna word that? If I'm looking for indoor lodging, it is specified in the code or in the definition section.
Great. Okay.
Any other comments about the amended, uh, recommendations?
Oh, one other thing, by the way. You crossed off in the parking sections about in the commercial, the downtown business section. The section requiring them, you took off central business district. Does that mean they're now central business has to meet parking requirements?
Where is that? I'm sorry.
I, I don't know. Something in the park, when you were in the parking section, there was something on, you cross.
It's at the bottom of note, uh, page nine of that second, right there.
Yeah, so that.
Talking about?
Yeah, right. It says it doesn't apply to the CB district, right? Does that mean now all these parking requirements are applied to the CB district?
So what this is doing is it's completely getting rid of parking maximum requirements. Parking minimum, that section is remaining untouched as it is. What this is doing is it's getting rid of parking maximum.
What's that?
So parking minimum is you have to have this many parking spaces. Parking maximum is you can't have any more than these many parking spaces.
Okay.
So they're getting rid of the requirement that you can't go above a certain amount of parking spaces.
I got you. So it's just a maximum section up and down. Okay. All right.
So I, I just have a question. So some of these, like the residential districts, when you don't restrict the maximum number of parking, how does that fit in with lot coverage?
Lot coverage would still be a thing. I mean, that's, that's not changing. The amount of asphalt they can have is still the same. It's just, just the amount of parking spaces.
Any other comments?
So I, I just want to understand how that works practically. So a business, a, a business downtown has, you know, ten spaces, but they currently have a maximum of X. And now they could have, you know, if the maximum was twenty, they, they could now have fifty spaces?
Yes, as long as they don't exceed lot coverage, which in the central business district is moot, but.
What is, what was their reason for wanting to remove the maximum? They give one?
A specific reason wasn't, uh, there was just a general about all of these changes about how it's, it's kind of more aligning to how things are enforced already. Not that this isn't enforced, but that it's, it almost never comes up really is what he was trying to say. You know, it's, it's not a thing that ever, sometimes, but it's not very often.
Are we okay with making a vote on this? Anybody else want to say anything?
With Chuck's recommendation, right? With Chuck's change, correct?
Yes.
With Chuck's amendment. Okay.
All those in favor of the amended recommendations?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No abstentions. Okay.
All right, we're out of the zoning text amendments and we're on to the last one and the largest one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's a conditional permit and special permit for demolishing an existing building and site features, the old Wilcox Tire. And constructing a twenty-one thousand two hundred square feet, uh, Keoga Medical Associates medical facility. Uh, it is in, it is zone B two. It's in the aquifer protection overlay, which is why it needs the, uh, the special permit, I believe is the one that's the aquifer. No, it's the condition. No, it's the special permit. Yeah. Uh, and then it's in the wellhead protection zone too, which just, uh, lot coverage stuff which they comply with. Uh, the recommendations, uh, we've got that the town determine if the proposed architectural style is compatible in character with both nearby developments and the future mixed use area identified in the future land use map in the town's comprehensive plan, which we reviewed two months ago, I believe. Um, that the submitted plans be covered under the constructional general permit that came from, uh, DEC. And that the, or not DEC. So, no, that was DEC. Okay.
Yes.
Um, that the rocks billway indicates as discharging from the infiltration basin, that the document, that documentation acknowledges both NICE deck stormwater regulations and the town of Cortlandville stormwater ordinance. And that the native plant species be, or that native plant species be used to the maximum extent practical on the proposed site compliance with SEER. Uh, it's a big one. So give me questions.
Motion to accept staff's recommendations.
We'll make that motion. Paul.
Paul, second?
I'll second it. Dan.
Dan, okay. And discussion.
There are a few things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There, there are a few things, um, that I just wanted to note, um, that, um, specific recommendations didn't come out of, uh, that we have listed. But there was conversation with the applicant, um, Cortlandville obviously has been taking a very, very close look at this project. Um, and been, there's been quite a bit of back and forth and the applicant is in the process of addressing some, um, egress, um, questions and requests that Cortlandville had. The, um, the, there is a intersecting street that's, is that right across the street from, um, yeah, I just wanted to call that off.
Glenwood.
Yeah, Glenwood. Glenwood comes out right between where they had originally proposed, um, a one-way in and, um, on one side of Glenwood and out on the other side. Um, so there's been continual conversation with them and DOT about that. And I wanted to make note of that. As well as sidewalks being included as part of their proposal. Um, the, the applicant did not originally include sidewalks with their site plan. Um, but Cortlandville would like to, um, has shown interest in having those included. Um, there are no, there are no sidewalks currently on the adjacent properties. But, um, Cortlandville reached out to us and we did agree with them that, um, that it would, it would align well with their comprehensive plan, um, to plan for future um, sidewalk installations along that, um, along that area. So I wanted to note that off the bat.
And I appreciate that Tricia, because I saw that in the comments from CMA. Um, and I understand that those two properties on either side don't have sidewalks, but you got to start somewhere. Um, and if they're putting in a new building, there's no reason why you can't have a sidewalk, even if it's a short stretch to, you know, start the process somewhere. Um, otherwise it just never, it never goes. Um, it can't seem to hurt. Yes, it's a little extra cost, but sidewalks aren't that expensive. Um, and it would start to help build the walkability of Tompkins Avenue, which is.
Yep.
That was our sentiments as well.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we actually add that as a formal recommendation to the staff's recommendations, that a sidewalk be added, um, to the plans for this, um, moving forward. So I'll make a formal motion to add that to staff's recommendations.
I get a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I was a little bit confused with your, you have a conditional permit called out and a special permit. Now that special permit is an aquifer protection district special permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think that just instead of special permit, should it say the aquifer protection permit?
Well, the way it read, it just said special permit. So I could have, I, I probably could have put it in there. Uh, I elected not to just because the exact word just says special permit. It's within the aquifer district that it says that, but the actual wording says needs a special permit.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be wrong to add that. I can do that next time, definitely.
And would this, um, site require a stormwater pollution prevention plan?
It says that already meets the, uh, state requirements.
Included.
Yeah, it's included in the recommendations.
Oh, yeah. And it was in part of their, um, uh, their application.
I did, yeah. I guess, I guess what I wanted to see is more of that, um, shown in the recommendations.
It's in there, Anne, with the, when it talks about the, the permit, that is the requirement for construction permit for stormwater. So the recommendations already state that.
Okay. Oh, documented, acknowledged as both DC stormwater regulations and, okay. Okay. Um.
And did you want us to add the aquifer protection to this, um, to this report or just moving forward?
Well, I, I just wasn't clear that, that it was the aqua- aquifer protection district special permit versus a conditional special permit or something like that.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly update that. Do we need, um, a motion to do that? To just add small verbiage like that?
I would just clarify that. And is anybody else concerned about the existing contaminated soils there? They say there's six wells there, but only one of them was found that was just put in in two thousand nineteen. And it does say in their, their notation, further demolition and excavation could encounter impacted soils and may need proper handling and disposal. I was a little concerned that there's nothing in our recommendations to deal with that.
I think, Anne, that was forested the environmental assessment on that and what they're. what they're saying is when they start digging, they may run into contaminated soils that may need to be processed because they exceed limits. They may not, they really don't, but there were just some, I guess there were some tanks there at one time or something. So when they start excavating, sometimes you're running into some soils that may need to be treated or hauled off site. And that's, I think that's what he's trying to say there.
Well, that's just in the summary of the, uh, not so much that we are recommending that, but they kind of, the geologic, geologic report says that, but we aren't saying that, should we be saying that?
I don't think we need to, that's part of the environmental recommendations, and whoever overseeing construction will be necessary to do that. That's a normal process of any construction site where you have an environmental assessment done, you tell them they might run into some extra costs when they get out there.
And this is kind of what we were picking ourselves apart on too, Anne, was that their, um, engineering report and their plan set was pretty comprehensive. They covered a lot of their bases in their report. And we, we kind of went back and forth on how much do we dissect every, um, every point of the project? Because, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of different things going on in this process. How much do we lay that out in our report and in our recommendations, um, when they are in their report? So we went back and forth, do we reiterate a bunch, or, um, or not?
Well, I, I didn't know that during construction, the contractors that are actually building this, are they going to see this geo-logic report and go by what that report says? I wouldn't think so, they're going to be out there digging and find it and scoop it and take it, you know?
So this is such a large project that I'm sure they have a, a construction management company and an inspector on site during construction who will be keeping to the letter of the law with, with these reports that are provided. Um, we.
Yeah, it's a health facility, I doubt seriously they're going to ignore environmental regulations where they have a problem with some soil contamination. Because their, their insurance company would kill them if they did.
But we could, you know, we could always add a statement that, um, you know, there, you know, we recommend strict adherence to, um, the, the, um, reports and investigations that are provided. If there's, there's other options that we could call that out if everybody preferred.
I don't, I don't care, I, I'm leery that it would be followed in the field. If nobody else has that concern, then that's fine, I'll go along with that.
You know, one thing maybe what we, we could do, we did, we had a coordinated review committee for this meeting, and we spoke to the engineer and the architect that worked on it. We could just reach out and check to just verify who's providing on-site inspection. I'm sure generally, like, the engineering firm will provide it, or they sub it out to a third-party contractor. Um, we could just verify and send that information out to the board.
That'd be good, I would feel better.
Absolutely.
Tricia, I just said, I just had one other, just question, um, and that we were talking about walkability with, um, sidewalks and getting that started, one other thing just kind of comes to mind, and it may not fit in here, but I'm just curious, they are, this, um, new medical facility would be sited along, um, local transit route four for the buses. It would be wonderful if, you know, they were to some way down the road, work with Cortland Transit to have a stop added, um, you know, in front of the building so that people coming from, you know, around Cortland, uh, could reach the facility. Um, it's kind of in the middle of, of two separated bus stops, um, but it would be wonderful if, if one could be there, because then they could use it also to go to physical therapy and some of the others. Um, I don't know if it's something that should go into any sort of recommendation here, but just, you know, kind of thinking longer term, uh, it would be nice to see, given that this is a medical facility, made me think also about the well now that we talked about, you know, a year and a half ago, it'd be nice if that was on a, you know, on our route. Um, but, uh, this one's right along the route, it'd be nice if they at least considered it down the road, um, if practical, to allow greater accessibility for citizens.
I think that's a great point, Bo, and honestly, I think a great, a large portion of that would be on us, um, as the county, and we could ensure, it, you know, would almost be more of an internal recommendation, I think, for us to ensure that, um, that our, there's, um, and I think with the site layout that they're offering, there's even, um, room and availability for a bus shelter if necessary at this location, if they find the need down the road. Um, so, so, yeah, I'm open whether you want to add it in the recommendations, or, um, um, you know, we, we bring it up with the mobility manager to make sure it's something that stays aloft and stays fresh. But I know that there, um, we're working on, um, you know, updating and, and and addressing the routes in general, so they may be changing as well coming down the line. But this is definitely a facility that would be, that would be a great one to have a stop at.
Well, I would, I wouldn't want to make them dependent on whether or not Cortland Transit has a line that goes past. So I don't know that I would want to put it into the recommendations, but maybe just to you all, given that the mobility manager does work under your office, is, you know, for us to consider those, you know, in the future, particularly for like medical facilities and some of these others, is there an opportunity? Um, and, and are these, um, developers amenable, or eventually the tenants amenable to working with us in, with Cortland Transit to, to put in a bus stop? Um, better accessibility for potentially their patients, better access for our residents, so something to consider.
You know, that's a really good point, um, it, it wouldn't even hurt to have that conversation with the, um, with Cortlandville as well. Um, just to make sure, you know, on this site plan, you know, just pre-planning for where would, um, and from my, our conversations with the engineers and the architects, they are more than willing and happy to make any adjustments for whatever layout works best and whatever is best for the county and the town. Um, you know, even if it's not in the recommendations, um, but just make that point. Um, bring that point up to perhaps the chair of the planning board, um, to, um, plan forward for public transportation access as well.
Right, exactly, I've actually seen the bus pull over at Dove Motors, uh, you know, to drop people off, but they just kind of had to get off into the, into the road, but if, if they maybe planned this as part of how they're putting together the, um, you know, if they had a bump in where they could kind of pull the, the bus in, let people off, get people on, you know, a little safe out of the road, um, something like that, it would be good for us to just be considering those options in the future, not only walkability, but our local trans, transit.
That's a really good point, um, we can definitely bring up, especially this being on Route thirteen. Um, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough, busy area for them to just stop completely. Um, you know, their highway engineers here could look at the, the lane widths and look at space available for a stop, um, and they could definitely take that into consideration.
I'm not making a motion, but I, I do appreciate you thinking it through, and I'm happy to talk, talk about it further.
I think it's a great point.
Tricia, I have a general question, has nothing to do with this application per se, and can delay us getting done. But this facility, is this like an urgent care, or what is it? And because we just built the one over next to Burger King was just approved, they're building that now. Keuga Medical already has something on the facility up there, and the hospital has, are we getting like a lot of these things right now? Is this something we need?
Um, so this one in particular, I think there's a description of the services that they'll be providing. I think it's like small surgeries, um, lacerations, I think Alex is probably pulling it up. It seems like very, um, like a quick, easy in and out for, um, small surgical procedures. Um, yeah, I know.
I think it's comparable to the surgicare by, uh, across from the airport over in Ithaca. Not across from the airport, but across that intersection.
Surgery center or something like that.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm not in the medical field, but it seems like there is a, a trend for, for, um, to be providing more convenient, not to reuse the name, but more convenient care locations for, um, patients to get faster access to smaller things and not get put on back burners with people that have larger procedures. That's just my personal observation, now if that's a reality or not, I'm not sure, um, but.
I just wondered, I just wondered, there are a lot of them going in, it seems like.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's definitely.
That's because you're, you're getting old, Chuck. It would have been nice to have, the surgery was done over in Ithaca, so.
Okay, I know I'm being a bug, but I have one more issue, is there any concern with the lot coverage here after this future addition and additional parking there?
Nope, they, 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 uh, it's checked out, they're good on that, even with the, uh, the wellhead protection.
Okay. That's all I have, I promise.
Good.
We, we, we love the comment.
Yeah.
I took too much time looking into this tonight, I think, yesterday.
The more we look into it, the better.
Anybody else?
I'd rather us catch it.
Yeah. So, okay, how, all those in favor of accepting staff's recommendations? We didn't make any amendments, did we? No, so just the staff's recommendations.
Hi.
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 Anybody opposed?
Wait, I just want to, can I just clarify really quick that, didn't we add the sidewalks?
We added the sidewalks, yes.
Which was approved unanimously, so we made that motion, that was approved, and now we're approving amended.
That's right.
Recommendations, yep.
Okay, so, everybody in favor, there was no opposition? Okay, so moved.
Uh, Lori, are you abstaining?
I, I did abstain from that, yes.
Okay.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, because I work for First National Bank of Dryden, so as long as we had enough people to vote, I did not vote.
Okay, very good. Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, thank you, Alex.
Okay, we just have the general municipal applications that have been returned.
Yes, oh, yeah, let me, I'll show that, it's preemptive. There you go, yep, we had quite a few this time, um, so if you have any questions on any of them, I can, I can answer them.
And the. Go ahead. And the.
I'll, I'll back off, who was talking first?
Oh, go ahead, Chuck.
Paces on Clayton was expanding the driveway, and I just wasn't sure if that was, um, going in the front yard, I assume it's because he's got student housing there. But I wasn't sure he's putting that in the front yard or not, or if it's going in the back, or it looks like it's partly in the front yard, I wasn't sure if that's.
It's partly in the front yard, yeah, and I believe he lives there, so I don't, I don't think it's student housing.
Okay.
I think, uh, the Town of Homer site plan for Chris Cabot, that's another multiple dwellings on one parcel, and that's where I did see existing septic in a well, and I believe there's existing well also called out, so they're putting two septic systems in there. And Leach Field.
The Town of Homer zoning code allows two single-family dwellings, so it wasn't for, um, it wasn't for a use variance, uh, I would, I like to, use variances are a bigger deal, so I like to make sure they come here, but, uh, this is simply for a site plan review, because it's required for double-wide.
Homer allows multiple dwellings, so it's interesting. That's all I have. Anybody else? Any announcements for next month?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded. Our next meeting is November seven, no, next meeting.
Yes, seventeenth.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And we may send out, um, like a doodle poll, maybe perhaps to see what format we want to have, the greater portion want to do for our meeting. Webex, um, again, or hopefully by next month, Savannah, the clerk has ordered headsets to speak into, so that those people that are zooming on, if we have a split meeting, um, some in person, some on webex, you can hear, you can hear better people that are in that chamber room. So, um, so we'll, we'll send out a poll and we'll reach out to see what, um, people want to do in a few weeks, once those come in.
I have a quick question on next, is it, once Thanksgiving, or are we, week after that or something? We're not getting close.
For Thanksgiving. Twenty-fifth.
That's the week before.
Week before, okay, alright.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.